All right, good morning. It's a little after eight-thirty. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. We do have an agenda addition, so I'll be looking for an approval of the agenda.
Approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney and a second by Commissioner Wayland for approval. That addition was to fill a full-time motor grader position in the Highway Department. Next, we have citizens -- oh, we didn't -- all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Citizens to be heard, is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have the minutes from October twenty-third.
Move approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Item number two is our request approval for the annual purchase agreement with West Central Regional Jubilant Center. James O'Donnell, good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Here today to request approval of the annual purchase agreement for the West Central Regional Jubilant Center.
Okay.
You approve?
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve and a second by Commissioner Haney. Do you want to highlight a couple things in there? Is there anything?
Sure. No, it operates under the new proper service agreements, so the percentage that each county is responsible for is based on the percentage of their usage of facilities resources.
Yes, okay. We do have two commissioners on your advisory board, so this is something that we've been fully up to speed on. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number three is a request approval to apply for the Minnesota Department of Human Service grant. Kathy McKay, Troy Amundson, also Steve, are you? Kathy, are you waiting for someone? I apologize.
Oh, no.
Okay. Rhonda? Sorry.
Be gone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, this is an exciting opportunity. Please.
I can start out here and the rest of the team can have some other things that they want to say. Yes, we were excited at the potential opportunity. There's a grant from Minnesota Department of Human Services which makes it a little bit different than normal, as it's actually for bricks and mortar. And so, we have -- the funding looks to work with the design, the construction, the furnishing, and the equipment in either a remodel or a new facility. Capital projects are eligible to five million dollars. And so, we got together as a group when we became aware of this grant and kind of put the heads together here of what are the biggest needs that we have here at Clay County. This committee came together and you have a handout today in front of you that were the findings of this group. And Troy Amundson from the detox coordinator put that together, and so I'm going to turn it over to him at this point.
Well, our hope is that we can get approval to apply for the grant. As you know, our detox is probably not the most appropriate place for many of our clients. We want to have a safe place for them. We currently have sixteen beds. If we get approval and awarded the grant, our hope is that we can expand the facility to have two sixteen-bed facilities. Right now, one of our biggest problems is a lot of the people that come in under heavy intoxication or under influence are in the same area as people that have detoxed or are waiting placement for treatment. One concern is that when we have a pregnant female there, that they are at risk to have the other clients, you know, in the same area, and we just don't want something to happen to them. So, yeah, I guess that's the main thing, is just the facility is just not appropriate for what we need.
And Troy, maybe you could discuss a little bit of the two programs. What would be the difference?
So, what we're looking at doing is we are actually looking at hopefully applying for a new license, which would be a withdrawal management license. That would be a step up from what we currently have in our Rule thirty-two. Our Rule thirty-two is essentially this withdrawal management. Other than with the new license, it would be mandatory to have nurses on staff on shift, every single shift. Right now, we can get away with having a nurse on call. So, this would make it more of a medical facility, which hopefully would allow for us to bill for MA and have other reimbursement coming in. We would then take our current license and use that for a lot of commitment holds. Clay County, other counties, it would be a regional center where we could hold these clients until they could go to a treatment facility. For instance, with the pregnant women, they want a safe place for them to be before they can get them into a treatment facility. And sometimes it can take two, three weeks to get them into an appropriate program. So, that's what we would be looking to do.
Commissioner Wayland.
So, is you plan to apply for the five million dollars then? And do you have any -- so, that's to build new facility?
That would be to build a new facility, yeah.
And would that cover that? Or do you have a -- do you have a plan in place? Do you know what?
I'm here, Mr. Wayland. I think we've had a couple meetings with Scott Fettig from Clay and McCarthy and Ben Mattson from Construction Engineering. So, what we've asked if this were to move forward and to do a pre-design of the building and then Ben Mattson and his group would then provide an estimate for that project. Based on the fact that the construction material isn't the same as a jail, he felt very comfortable that we would be able to have a price within the five million.
And I've got one other question. So, what percentage of your clients right now are from North Dakota? And would that impact your ability to get the grant, you know, from Minnesota?
I don't see that as an issue. I'm not quite sure what our percentage is. Maybe twenty-five percent North Dakota from southeast. It would have to be in the grant. It's required to be a regional center, and we already take some clients from Ottertail County, Becker County, all the way up to actually Budette, you know, has sent clients to us. So, I don't see that as an issue, but.
Well, Commissioner Campbell and I have been part of the initial discussions, and from our standpoint, I think anytime that you have an opportunity to secure a five-million-dollar grant, you take it seriously and take a serious look at it. And from my perspective, any groundwork that we do right now to look at the needs of the detox facility, if we don't secure this grant, the need is not going away. I mean, at some point, whether we get this grant or not, we're going to have to seriously look at the needs of that detox facility. And so, I think that any money that we have to put in to kind of make this proposal, to finish this proposal, I think is money well spent. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. We have been working on this and, you know, I've -- I raised a question, could it somehow work into what we've done with our correctional facility? And there's obviously going to be some sort of maybe potentially shared programming that could be done and that type of thing, but we've since learned that we probably couldn't attach that to the current facility. So, you know, my encouragement was is that they look at a design of a freestanding facility by itself, not necessarily with a site yet, because we don't really need the site yet. I mean, we first need to do our plans as far as what the facility would look like and then get into the preliminary costs and things of that nature. But the -- if we don't, you know, if we don't get that five million dollars, somebody else in the state of Minnesota is going to get it. And so, we might as well be looking for it. And I think the good news in this is that even if we get this grant, we have a fairly significant amount of time to be able to work with the grant. I think if I'm not mistaken, we have up to five years to do this. So, and certainly, as Commissioner Mojo said, in a period of five years, what you have going on, Troy, in your facility right now is really good. You know, when we think about it, we have a detox facility in the same building that we have, you know, our child.
Ted Stark.
It's Ted Stark. You know, obviously, they're on opposite sides of the building, but still, it just, I don't think you'd find that very often, that you have a detox facility in the same place as a preschool.
Not hanging on second floor either.
So, you know, so I think from a long-term standpoint, this is the right thing to do. I would, you know, I certainly would encourage our board to move forward with the grant opportunity and also the pre-design costs that we might be looking at. It's something that even if we worked to get the grant, it's something that will need to be done at some point in time anyway. So, the design work is good to have. It's good, you know, even if we have to shelve it for a little while, it's still good to have. So, I certainly think this is a good idea.
I'm going to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland and a second by Commissioner Gross with a follow-up question by Commissioner Gross.
Well, are we looking at closing the detox of the family service center then?
That would be my thoughts, yeah.
That would be the next thing comes for rent, so that would help out too, so.
Well, I'm all. And I was thinking too, what Commissioner Campbell was saying, could we work it in with the correctional center, you know, build an addition on there now and convert it later on to whatever, but.
Yeah, we looked at that, and there's some issues that make it -- I don't think we should give up on that yet, but I think there's some issues that make it.
Trickier.
Yeah.
Very good, okay.
I do want to say thanks for your quick work on this. I know from the time that you heard about it in September, I think the grants due in the middle of December, so you've definitely been working hard on that. And the five of us are not very good grant writers, so thank you to the skilled team that you have.
Find out how good we are.
For five million dollars, it can be really good. Anything else?
I'm here, I don't know. It certainly is up to you and this board. If you would want to designate some commissioner to be part of this process over the next month, we'll have some go-to meetings and things like that with Clay and McCarthy, and so it would be good to have noise.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our board chair can do that.
Okay.
So, we need a motion for that?
So, let's act on the motion on the table, so we have.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
I -- so, does the motion include the going ahead with the pre-design costs? Is that the?
Yeah, that would be the motion, and then to have, we can include having Commissioner Mojo serve on the board with per diem, so.
Okay, I approve of that.
All right, so the -- we have a motion and a second for the approval of the grant submittal, including the costs of any incurred architectural fees as well as a board liaison. Any other questions? It's exciting, any other question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, Kirk, is everyone here for you? All right, request to select a consultant for the engineering services of the landfill expansion, Kirk Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A week in the mountains and the entry's a little bit tough, let me tell you.
We have snow now.
Yeah, they don't have snow out there yet either, actually, so.
Were there any fish there?
Well, I'll fill you in on that. It's a very sad story, but I'll fill you in on that.
Oh, okay.
We did make an investment, but the fishing was not so good. First of all, Madam Chair, congratulations to you and Commissioner Campbell. I was gone when the election happened, but congratulations on the election. Look forward to working with you for the next four years. Should be a good, exciting four years for the solid waste department, so I look forward to that. The reason we're here today is we had some work that we're going to be doing out at the landfill, primarily an expansion of the facility. I've been putting this off for quite a while because it's a fairly expensive proposition. What I did is I talked to two consulting firms, just to give you kind of an idea of what the process is. We talked to two consulting firms and asked them what we should be doing out there at the landfill. Essentially, two consulting firms were Wink and Burnson McDonald from the Twin Cities. Initially, we had an interview panel. The interview panel was two commissioners, and we also had city public works director, Steve Moore was there, Dave Overboat from the Highway Department was there, and we interviewed these two companies. The companies themselves, the proposals were very, very, very similar. The cost was very, very similar. The, as a result of the interview, it was decided that three to three, three people felt that Burnson Mac should be the one, and three people thought Wink should be the one. It was left up to me to make a decision. I didn't want to make a decision because I could work with either one of the two companies, and so I thought that we should try and take another look. So, at the suggestion of Commissioner Campbell, we took it to the solid waste advisory committee. Solid waste advisory committee, as you know, is composed of members of the community, Clay County, and they're all very, very involved. We meet monthly to discuss solid waste issues, so it's a pretty positive group. After the meeting, it was based on the recommendation of the people in the SWAC, who was overwhelmingly in favor of Burnson Mac. The issue, basically, there were two issues, I think, that were concerned of both the initial interview panel and also the solid waste advisory committee. The first was the history. Some people liked the fact that Wink has a longstanding history with the landfill. Likewise, there were a lot of people that didn't like the long-term history that Wink had at the landfill, so that was a major issue. Another major issue was the local presence. A lot of folks felt the local presence of Wink was a real positive thing, whereas a lot of people also felt that, you know, the per diems would be an issue with Burnson McDonald because they are Twin Cities firm. As I mentioned, solid waste advisory committee felt that Burnson Mac would be the most appropriate consulting firm. We went back and we met as a group, the initial interview panel met as a group, to discuss the recommendations, and upon the completion of that discussion, it was recommended that we do go with Burnson Mac. What I've attached with you is I attached the two proposals in the board packets so I could read it if you needed some nighttime reading material. And actually, the other part that I attached was a contract. It was a sample contract between the county and Burnson Mac. I understand there's some things that aren't included in that, so we'll get that information and we'll get the contract approved and then we'll be on with it. So, with that, what I'm looking from here today is a basic approval of the selection of the consultant.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I think Kirk did a very good summary of what had transpired to this point, and I know when we had the six-person panel that did the first interview, which was a more in-depth interview than what SWAC did get, there clearly was, it was a three to three, you know, and it was tough. We all saw, you know, good in both of them. But, you know, we have, we've created SWAC for a reason, and that's to advise this board on issues and how things should be handled when it comes to solid waste. And so, I think it was appropriate for us to have them also then receive a maybe little higher level of presentation. As a matter of fact, as the chair of the committee, they both were given fifteen minutes to present their case, but I think they did a pretty good job in that fifteen minutes in doing so. And SWAC overwhelmingly felt that Burnson Mac was better, and I, to this point, don't see how we could go against SWAC on that. So, I will certainly support SWAC's decision. And as a matter of fact, if they have that motion, I would move to go forward with Burnson Mac's second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Wayland to appoint the recommended Burnson McDonald, McDonald as a consultant engineer. Anything else? Anything else? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie.
Very good, thank you very much.
Very much. Dave, can we take your agenda addition quickly? Good morning. So, you have a request for approval to fill a full-time motor grader operator position?
Yeah, Friday I got a retirement request, I guess, from a gentleman that doesn't want to call us snow anymore. I wondered if I could get to him, and he's borderline having health issues, you know, sleeping at night and things, and it's not good for anybody, I guess, if it's got to that point. So, I think we do have some part-time staff that would be willing to interview and apply for the position, so I think we can quickly kind of get back to full steam again here. We do have two open positions. We've got a maintenance worker, truck driver position, and then motor grader operator. So, per union contract, we'll have to do some internal postings and see who wants to apply, and but I think we got, we do have some backfill, some part-time guys that are good guys that really want to work for us, and I think it can work out pretty good.
The way this season's going, you don't want to leave those positions open, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve with backfill, a second by Commissioner Haney. Any other discussion? Will there be any type of savings?
Well, Darren and I talked about that a little bit, and I think, you know, initially there will not be because there's some large payouts. Chris has been with us for twenty years, and he's got a twenty-year plaque not too long ago, so he's got a lot of vacation. He's one of the guys that is quite healthy, and so a lot of vacation, a lot of, there's quite a bit of payout, so initially, I think there could be as much as twenty thousand dollars paid out, but he's also further down the scale too, so the employee with less years will, I think it'll make up, but there'll be some cash payouts or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you.
Yeah, you'll stay around, right? Thank you.
All right, our next agenda issue is number five, the county attorney adjusted staffing proposal and budget. Our acting county attorney, Pam Foss, good morning.
Madam Chair, just a point of, when we got our packets, the, some of the attachments that was supposed to go with Pam's memo were stapled to the wrong document, so these two documents here are part of Pam's, were supposed to be part of Pam's presentation. Where were they stapled to?
They were stapled to the.
Detox.
Detox, yeah.
All right. Will we find that? Do you want to pick it up?
Yeah. And here today, as the board is aware, it's been discussed in previous meetings. We've had a contract with the city, or actually, we haven't had a contract in the last three years with the city of Morehead for prosecution. We started that original contract in two thousand and one, contracting prosecute for Morehead, Gilworth, Glendon.
Holly.
Holly, and Barnesville eventually joined in. The last three years, we haven't had a signed contract. Beginning of this year, well, actually, about eighteen months ago, almost two years ago, Mr. Melton got a hold of the new city manager, Ms. Volkers, tried to get a contract, signed with her, that was unsuccessful, the negotiations. We continue to try and get a signed contract. Beginning of this year, we again approached them. We finally gave them a dead hotline of October fifteenth to negotiate a contract with us. That date came and went on the sixteenth of October. They indicated they, that they wanted more time, or they, we gave them more time until November fifteenth, which is actually this week. It's my understanding, although I drafted the letter and it was signed by Madam Chair as well, that we would continue through November, to negotiate through November fifteenth. I personally never heard anything from Ms. Volkers. I think there were email exchanges among commissioners and maybe Mr. Larson indicating that the city of Morehead is, does not want to continue services with the county. The letter indicated when we extended it to November fifteenth that we continue prosecution services through January thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. As a courtesy for them, I spoke with Mr. Beatlesbacher. The fact that we don't have a contract, I don't even think we're obligated to do that, but the letter we sent said we would continue until January thirty-first. So, as of January thirty-first, our office does not intend to continue any prosecution for any of this Morehead or the smaller cities. Given that, when Mr. Melton submitted his budget, that revenue from that contract was part of the budget. So, we needed to do a budget adjustment and look at what's the makeup of our office. And on, I don't know which page it would be stapled to, it's the one that has original budget, proposed budget, and difference, as well as the new office makeup sheet.
Okay, we all have it.
So, what I'm proposing is that we continue with eight criminal attorneys, three civil attorneys, that would fill the paralegal position that we have currently open, that we do not fill the contract attorney position that we currently have open, that we not fill the one legal assistant position that we have open, and that we maintain our victim's services in our restorative justice. So, we would go down to five legal assistants, paralegal, we'd have eleven attorneys. When I looked over the budget that Mr. Melton had done and put in the numbers of the salaries for this makeup of our office, also putting in a line for temporary or roster position, we have a backlog of cases that we need to review. I think we have over two hundred and fifty dating back to January first that we are going to need to catch up on, and the legal assistants are going to have to catch up on. So, we wanted to have a cushion to be able to have some temporary, some of our part-time people have offered to do a few more hours to help us catch up on that backlog. When I worked out those numbers, you'll see that the original budget there, along with the proposed budget, the difference actually came out to be the cost of the contract. So, we have a budget-neutral situation here, at least for this year. We did run this through the committee last week. They recommended that we follow through with this and that this would be something that would be workable. I would note that it's going to change a little bit in the following year because Mr. Melton will be back, his salary will be looped back in, but as far as this next coming year, we should be able to operate with this new office makeup, not losing any attorneys, not filling those two positions, and be able honestly to provide the service that we should have been serving, giving to the county for the past few years, and have been unable to do so.
Well, Commissioner Campbell and I were part of this discussion, as you know, and as chair, I did send the letter to Morehead, so I've been in on the loop a lot with this. It's unfortunate that Morehead and the smaller cities chose the path that they did. I think as Commissioner Wayland will definitely attest to, since he was in on the beginning of that, is that it's a great way to have the cohesive network, and I think it's really important. The fact that they neglected to come to the table for several years, and I think we really did give them the benefit of the doubt to come to the table early before Mr. Melton was deployed, we gave them an extension to make this a transition that would be something we could all live with. They did choose otherwise, and best of luck with that. But in order to address the needs of our office downstairs, I feel that this is probably the most important thing, and I think that having the forty thousand dollars available to use to catch up on that enormous backlog of files is something that is important to provide, as you said, the best service to the citizens as we can. And I am comfortable with what's proposed here and would support it. Commissioner Campbell, did you?
Sure, yeah. I, you know, it's disappointing that the collaboration didn't work out in this particular case. I know that, you know, going back to Commissioner Wayland, I think you were involved a long time ago with bringing that prosecution from the city stuff to the county. I, my focus was on the morale that was going on in that. I, my focus was on the morale that was going on in that department as a result of this and the people worried about, you know, with the loss of revenue, what was going to happen to them. I think Pam, you've done a fantastic job in redoing this proposed budget. And it certainly shows that who we have there now, they're going to be able to remain there. And it's still going to be cost neutral for us. We do need to be clear that in 2020, that, that it would no longer be budget neutral, that there would still be, you know, whether that number's 50,000 or, I think we had a number there that was for that when Brian comes back.
Yeah, it'll probably be about 100 to 120,000.
Yeah, but we have 40 of that we've kept.
Yeah, yes.
Right? So, so the net difference in 2020 would, wouldn't be the full 100.
Well, it'll be close.
It'll be close with the salary.
Yeah, with the salary, it'll be close.
Okay. But then, but then that 40 that we're having now could be put towards that salary.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, so I think, you know, and again, we're, we need to remember that what we wanted in this whole thing was to be compensated for our costs. And no more, no less. And no more and no less. And we don't feel that we were able to agree to that. And, you know, so for that reason, I'm going to support this.
Commissioner Gross.
You had said before that Morehead and the small cities decided on this. Was it Morehead or was it the small, were they together on this or?
There was, so Morehead has the contract and then bills the smaller cities accordingly. And there was a meeting with the smaller cities and Morehead, and they did decide to not sign this contract. The representatives from the smaller cities, I think there were some city administrators that made that decision and some city council members that made the decisions for the different entities. I will say that I've reached out to three of those smaller cities and one has expressed interest in continuing in some sort of relationship with us moving forward. That's not included in that, this dollar amount. But Pam is, we discussed how we would work that out with Holly. I think Holly was the one that was still interested in that. So it, it did not go to action at any city council, but it was agreed upon at that meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Wayland.
Well, I think you guys did a great job, Pam, in getting this worked out. And in the future, I think, you know, we've got it worked out for this coming year. And, you know, there's always attrition and other things we can deal with in the, in the future. So it won't impact any current employees. But Pam, you indicated that you hadn't received any communication back from the city of Morehead on this issue, correct?
Not after the last, like, the October 11th.
But Steve, you, you have received some communication from the city.
Commissioner Mojo and I did receive an email from city administrator Volkers on October 29th that indicated that they were no longer interested in continuing services.
And part of the statement was that if we would be willing to continue our services with those cities until April. And part of the reason that this has all come to light anyway is because it was no longer sustainable in the amount of staff time and cost it was costing us to provide that service because we weren't getting reimbursed for it. My letter indicated that November 15th, that if they decided to not join in this, that services would end January 31st. And I'm committed to that end date. It's even going to be tricky for us in terms of staff to provide that. But that was what was initially offered. And so that, that, I'll stick by my word on what that is. I'm not interested in continuing that through the end of the spring. But whatever the board's decision is on that, I would support. But also, we have not replied to that initial email from Volkers in terms of that. So I would, you know, make motions on what this is going forward. But I would also like the ability to reply to Chris in terms of what the decision was.
And I heard that, that April date, and I think even extending it to the January 31st is, it's going to be difficult on my office, another three months of us of getting further behind. Plus, the transfer of files is going to, we're right now trying to figure out how to keep track of that. And when you talk about morale, if I go back down there and tell them, no, we're going to do it through the end of April, that is not, that's just not going to go down there. So I think the January 31st gives them plenty of time. It's, if we had a contract, it would be within the time allowed that we're supposed to give them notice. And they've had, I think they've had notice.
Right. And also, there is money available to provide the transition, and they should be billed accordingly. If we're incurring extra costs to make sure they get the documents, we should, we better be willing for that.
Right. Well, and I, you know, this January 31st is an extension from, you know, long-term discussions on this issue. And so, you know, I, I don't think we're, you know, this should come as any surprise to anybody that's been involved in this process. So I'll make the motion that, you know, we go forward with the, the proposed staffing plan with the county attorney's office and that, you know, their service ends effective January 31st, 2019.
Here, we have a motion by Commissioner Wayland. We have a motion by.
One second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion?
I just, for the record, will state, I appreciate all the work that your office has done to make this happen. The integrity of your office is of the highest. And it's unfortunate that this wasn't acted on at any city council level. I think this is something that should have been acted on by a city council.
Any further discussion?
I just want to point out again that I am disappointed that, that what was once a collaborative effort now puts two government entities on separate paths. And, and I think in reality, our citizens like the fact when we can collaborate and get together. And it's disappointing to me that I have to vote in favor of this motion, but I'm going to.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie. Thank you, Pam.
And then you will send a.
I, yeah, I will send a letter based on the decisions.
And if you could include something, if they can get, when they know where that's going and let us know so we can make that transition as easy as possible, I mean, we're ready to start doing that if we know.
The documents.
Yes. Who to transition it to.
I wonder, I wonder if maybe you should jointly write something so that you can express your concerns that you just mentioned. And so there's a transition, so that's included in the letter. If that's okay with you.
Something that includes what the county attorney's office requires to make this smooth as possible.
Are you? Yeah.
That's great.
All right, it is past nine o'clock. So we'll go to our item number six. Ben Olson and Hallie Durand, our new planning and zoning director, why don't you come forward? All right, looking for a motion to open a public hearing.
Tell them.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. We are in the public hearing. Welcome. I don't know if all of you have met Hallie and Ben. Ben has served as our planning and zoning interim since Tim left, and Hallie is our new director, so welcome. All right, Ben.
So what you have, I believe in your packets, is a copy of the proposed ordinance regarding renewable energy. This is two different types, solar and wind are the two basic types. Within the wind, there's, it's broken down, if you, if you have it in front of you. It's broken down into four different categories. It's kind of best seen on page 10. 10 and 11. But the, the wind is broken down into the microwex. Wex is wind energy conversion systems. That's a catch-all category for all of these wind towers. The micro are the kind of small solar, small ones that are on people's properties for their own use primarily. We have non-commercial and commercial at different electric generating capacities. And then meteorological towers are for sort of the investigative purposes when they're sighting out wind towers and measuring wind speeds and checking the conditions for whether they will work or not. So those are the four categories that are regulated. In that table on page 10, you can see that they're listed as conditional or permitted or not allowed into different zoning districts. And then as far as solar, those are broken down into the two categories. One for the individual use at homes primarily, and then the large solar farms that have become more and more popular over the last few years. So this is an issue that a lot of communities are dealing with. I've dealt with a number of them in the last couple of years on this. And so it's, it's definitely a good idea to, to work on this ordinance. Most of it was, was drafted by your previous zoning administrator. So Mr. Magnuson worked with whatever research and, and some of the industry I know, too. I'm drafting a lot of it. But when I came on it, it sat for a little bit of a time, and there was a push to get some movement on it. And so we met again as a committee of the planning commission or a subcommittee of the planning commission, made some additional changes, and then brought it forward to the planning commission. They held a public hearing. There was not a lot of public comment on this, but the industry was there, at least one of the representatives from, from one of the companies, and, and they recommended this, this ordinance to you, so.
Questions? I will note that I think we've had three, at least, subcommittees on this ordinance. And like you said, this has been something the planning commission talked about with Mr. Magnuson. We had a due process at the planning commission with Ben. So this is definitely something that I think has had a lot of input. It's been vetted. We've looked at the setbacks. We've looked at what our surrounding counties are doing. And there is a lot of interest in terms of, of companies that would like to put some solar energy on some properties. So this is something that, there has been citizens from Clay County that are quite interested in this because they'd like to see it move forward because it's a profitable ordinance. Questions?
Aye.
I have a question on section nine requirements and standards. Subdivision four, item five. All W E C S projects shall have a decommissioning plan outlining the anticipated means and cost of removing the W E C S at the end of their service of life or upon becoming a discontinued use. What is the amount of money that there's appropriating for that? Where's that money coming from?
The decommissioning plans would be funded by the industry or whoever the owner of the property is, whoever's operating it. So it's not looking for county money in that sense. But the idea of it is, is to protect the county because, protect the county from having to, or protecting landowners from having to deal with these if they are abandoned essentially.
What if they, what if they become insolvent?
Well, that's, I guess, the, the issue with these insulda. I think we didn't lay out specific amounts of money or specific criteria. I think you'd certainly want to work with your attorney's office and others through the conditional use permit process. A lot of these require going through a conditional use permit, public hearing, and those kinds of things. But that's been one of the main issues for the communities that I've dealt with this in is what happens if they go insolvent or whatever it is. So you can require.
What if the federal subsidies cut?
That's, I think that's the reason people are concerned about this. I think that's the exact reason because, you know, the, the industry is changing so fast and the technology is changing so fast that, you know, I had one town board, township board member that I work with on something like this ask that question, what if this becomes obsolete in 10, 20 years? And you've got all this equipment on the ground. And so, you know, the industry tends to answer that question with, there's value to the equipment and the materials that are out there, the metals and the different things that are out there. And so there's, it's not, they usually would prefer to sell it and get rid of it and, and make some of their money back if that were to happen. So there is that aspect to it. But I think you can certainly require bonds be in place, so as long as the bonding company's solvent.
Do you have a ballpark figure for the average price of decommissioning a 200-foot tower?
I don't personally know. I think that's something that you would want to ask around as you deal with these, you know, and figure out amounts. And so I think rather than, than putting those exact numbers into the ordinances that I've dealt with anyways, it's been left a little bit open because this is a bit of a new thing. And, and I think you want to have that flexibility. As long as you have those conditional use permits required, then you have the opportunity to add condition. And so you can add whatever amount you feel is appropriate and reasonable.
And that's part of, it's a different scheme, but that's what we've done with those gravel pits and these reclamation bonds that are required. You have the flexibility to add that at the conditional use process. You did have the input from several different counties that dealt with this. And the problem is that these weren't in place when a bunch of these solar farms, so to speak, went in in southern Minnesota. And all of a sudden, the counties were thinking, well, shoot, now we don't have a, a way to streamline the permitting process. And so I think this, this lays the groundwork to allow the planning commission to say yes or no. This is something that we could allow with any conditions. But Commissioner Haney's point is very valid.
Right. I think, if I may, too, the other, one of the other main concerns that comes up is weed control, especially on these solar installations, the solar farms. And so there's information in here about, you know, what kind of plantings they're supposed to put around it and maintain it and those kinds of things. But, you know, like any, any conditional use permit, any use, it requires some monitoring and occasionally sending them letters and meeting on them about maintaining their properties. So, but that comes up a fair amount in discussions. And then, you know, condition of roads, as they're installing these facilities, they can take a beating on gravel roads, especially if they're working on those. And so there's some, some language in there, too. But ultimately, the reason to require conditional use permit rather than just allowing these as permitted uses is to allow for an opportunity to address all those, take them case by case. You know, in some cases, you may want to require extra bonding, not just for commissioning, but also for road maintenance and road restoration once they're done constructing and vegetation management and all those kinds of things.
And I will say, I think Commissioner Campbell has a question. But it is important for this board to direct our concerns in terms of what, what we would like to see that be to Hallie. And so Hallie can then put that in staff reports so that it can be entertained at the planning mission level. I think that it's, it's hard for the planning commission to understand what our, our direction is if, if we're not clear about what that would be. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I remember being involved with these wind tower farms that we currently have in our county. And, and there was certainly a vast array of opinion on wind farms, which I was, I thought was kind of amazing when we're looking for alternative sources of, of power. But when it came to the commercial ones like we have here, a lot of those, it's, it seems to me a lot of that was, wasn't even regulated by us. It was regulated by the state. Once they, once they got to a certain level of size, that power would go to a grid. It became regulated by the state as opposed to us. Does this change that?
No, this doesn't change, you know, the state laws are still in place and the procedures for when the state becomes the regulatory authority still applies. That came up in a township that I work with. There was a solar farm that was being proposed just outside of the city boundaries. And so the township had some interest in that. But, you know, it's, it's, the state, in that case, the state ended up being the regulatory authority, not because of that project by itself. That project didn't meet that threshold. But the company that was proposing these was proposing about 30 of them, I believe, around the state. And they eventually convinced the state that that was one project. And so it meant the requirements to be state-regulated. And of course, they prefer that because then they don't have to go to 30 different meetings. They have to, you know, deal with one agency. But no, this doesn't change anything with state.
And then, and then going to some comments, you know, I, that Commissioner Haney had very valid comments. But again, I think a lot of those, in the ones that we did have, they were addressed in the process in terms of the, especially the damage to roads and things of those, that nature. They were all in there. And a reminder, too, that, that our county does receive revenues from these wind farms on an annual basis. That's, that helps us in a lot of different ways. And I like that revenue. And, and I hope, I hope we can still get revenue with what we have going on here in this process. But, but as a matter of fact, those wind farms are also helping us with our financial obligation on our new facilities here. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that we've refined tuning this. And I, I agree with Commissioner Mojo that we should talk further with you about moving forward and things of importance with conditions. should talk further with you about moving forward and things of importance with conditions.
Any other questions?
That's my comments.
Is there any public comment? Would anyone wish to speak on anything in regards to this ordinance? Darren?
We'll be closing here.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wayland to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Hallie, did you have anything to add? I know you're writing. New opportunity. All right, for the board's wishes.
I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve the Clay County Renewable Energy Ordinance.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Ben, for your work on this. And also, I believe it is today your last day.
This should be the last.
Well, we really appreciate the service that you provided us in the interim. I know that it may have been more time than you had initially thought it would be, but...
I appreciate the opportunity.
We really appreciate it.
It was fun working with everybody, and everybody was good to work with. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for helping us out.
Well, best of luck. Thank you. All right. Our next item is our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell on.
Sure. I had the, on Tuesday, November 6th, I had a highway tracking meeting, and there came up an issue on the, that Oakport local road improvement grant. There is an issue regarding design dollars. I've asked that we have a, another highway tracking committee meeting today to address some of those concerns and hopefully get this thing moving forward so we don't lose that grant. And then, and then we, I know Dave was, I don't know if you're going to put it in your report or whatever, but he was, he was, he wanted to know if there was interest amongst our board to have a county road tour at some point in time, you know. Obviously, if we did that, we would have to, you know, get a vehicle and advertise and allow the media to join us because it would be a quorum, so. So, that's out there. If you're, if there's interest in it, then, then...
I think that would be, I would appreciate that. I think that would be beneficial.
Okay. All right, so, Madam Chair, I think we'll probably look at something, I think it'd probably be more desirable to do that at a time of year when it's, it's more...
Not frozen?
Not frozen, so. So, we'll, we can relay that back to Dave and he can make plans for that.
That should be a week in June sometime, when it's not frozen.
You're an optimist.
Yeah, and then, we talked a little bit about, Cassaw 3 here has, we're going to do another speed study there. It's been a number of years since that's been done. For those of you that go, that's the area that goes by MB Johnson Park, and there's some homeowners there that are concerned about the traffic speeds along that area. And we, a little bit about the tap funding for projects in Holly and Barnesville. And that's about it. And then, obviously, last Tuesday was a big day in our county if we had elections, and I want to thank our staff for putting in the long hours and processing those election, all that election stuff, so.
Steve, how did the parking work throughout the day? I know that Commissioner Campbell and I were at a meeting where we talked about stringing that off, and it appeared when I was there in the morning that that was working.
Yeah, we were pretty consistent with having openings all day, so I think it worked pretty well. I have talked with Lori Johnson, looking at the possibility of using our LEC, new LEC for next year, which keep everything on the first level, and she thought that that would be something that would work.
I, you know, I appreciate that. Even though there is an elevator, I think that that gets to be cumbersome for people with limited mobility.
Madam Chair, that's right. And I, but I think we need to share that concern with the city of Moorhead because the city of Moorhead is the, is the one who establishes the polling sites within the city. And the polling site that was here was actually for part of Ward 1. And, and so, I think the city is going to have to be the one who designates the law enforcement center, and they need to do that by December 31st, so we should get that information to them so that they can. But then we have to be able to know when these elections are so that we can, that area will be reserved. But the building's going to always be there, I hope, so.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I do think, Madam Chair, the benefit also is, if you look on campus on any given day, that area over there is usually the one that's open, so it wouldn't impact citizens coming in to the courthouse, so a little less if we had it over there also, so.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Haney?
Yes, thank you. On Wednesday, I attended the city of Moorhead Planning Commission, and unfortunately, we lacked a quorum. And we had a proposal to develop the property along Old 52 and 12th Avenue South, right where the I-94 Liquors building is, and there are several lots there, and it was proposed to build a mixed-use commercial, two buildings with smaller breakdowns, approximately 2,000 to 4,000 square feet, something like that. And...
So, that has to be next month?
Pardon me?
You weren't able to take action?
We weren't able, but we did recommend it to the city council, and so it's going to be taken up by the city council now. And then, on Thursday, November 8th, I attended the solid earth, solid water conservation district of Clay County meeting, and loans for no-till drills was discussed, well sealing payment was authorized, deteriorating septic repair loans through the county was discussed. The Minnesota Department of Agriculture employee, Richard Grunus, wants to come up to discuss with the commissioner, with the commission plus the staff. Thirty counties currently take part in a program of low-interest loans for these septic repairs, and he's going to come up and talk to us about that. And the Bowser is pushing us to make agreements on enforcement of buffer laws, and they want to go through the local county attorney's office. And the question for us is if there are legal costs involved with the enforcement of buffer, and this is nothing new.
Right.
We do have that riparian aid sitting in the planning and zoning budget.
Okay.
So that if any of that legal fee type issue, stuff comes up, we're able to pay. But obviously, that could be absorbed quickly with a big case.
Right. So, that was my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if we can go back to the election issues. One other thing of note, that Oakport had their, their site for the area that was not annexed was the Rod and Gun Club. The Rod and Gun Club has been sold, or is, it's about to be sold, so they are going to be looking for a new polling place in the future. And I would, I would suggest that we reach out to them and offer them our facilities here, because they don't, will not have, they don't even have a town hall anymore, so, you know, so Tim may, or Steve, maybe you can reach out to, I know Tim Brendenmull's on that board and the rest of the board, and see if they would like to use our facilities. I think that would be a good, good thing, so, that's, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Gross?
Yeah, all right. Last Tuesday, I was at the highway tracking meeting, which we covered well by Commissioner Campbell. Wednesday, I attended another meeting at the highway department concerning that first item of the Oakport, that 15th Avenue North, and was, we had further discussion with the townships there, and they seem to be in dire need of some funds to help us out there, so we're having another meeting on that this morning, so we'll continue that discussion. Friday, Commissioner Haney and I, we're on the canvas board and we took care of that thing.
I forgot about that.
So, those are my meetings.
Thank you. Commissioner Wayland?
Oh, let's see, I had a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting last week, and mainly discussion about Veterans Day events that were going on and future fundraising events they're doing for the Yellow Ribbon. And then, this morning, I had a State Department Economic Development Board meeting and had staff updates, and then it was kind of a strategic planning session for the board, and that was it for me.
Okay, thank you. Last week, I attended the PIC committee. We addressed those recommendations this morning. I also had the Cast Clay Food Advisory. We had a presentation on food waste and kind of coming together in how we could help encourage reduced food waste throughout the county. I know that the planning and zoning level, we did have a organic recycling that had came for a conditional permit to the, put that at the landfill. I don't believe anything accumulated from that, but it's something that continues to be of discussion with that. There may be some way to partnership with public health when they do licensure for some of those food restaurants issues, and that does conclude, oh, the pumpkin recycling, I think, which wraps up tomorrow, was also of note. I will also say that while I've encouraged us to put those recycling bins at the gas stations like we have at the Moorhead Holiday, they just now expanded that to the gas station in Barnesville. So, that's a continued public presence that is appreciated by this commissioner anyhow.
If I can, I just want to, I did also attend that PIC meeting on the 6th. I did, I did not report on that. You've just covered that thing.
I have a question on those recycling things. I mean, it's great to get them out, you know, and I know, when we had local days, we had that, we had them out too, but we didn't have an organization picking stuff up, so, I mean, I don't know if you got to follow this. There's got to be a follow-through. It's not just putting them out there. I mean, someone's got to pick them up, a group's got to be assigned to that to pick them up, or, I don't know if that's part of the plan there or not.
I can answer that. I, in terms of the ones that go to the holidays stations that are here in Moorhead, there was an entity that, that did pick those up. I'm not sure if it's the same entity, but they, we won't be putting them out there without a way to pick them up.
Yeah.
And I think Shannon, with our solid waste department, is, recycling is in charge of that and does a good job with that, so. So, they should be picked up.
Well, sometimes you see those recyclers, they're good. But if no one picks them up, it doesn't help.
Okay. Any other? All right, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I also participated in both the highway tracking and the PIC committees. I've been covered in detail. I also participated with Darren in personnel matter. On Wednesday, participated in a meeting with Commissioner Gross at the 15th Avenue Grant Opportunity, joint facility, highway facility. The afternoon, I met with Eric Dodd and Rocky Schneider from AE2S, or AE2S, just a diversion update. On the 8th, I met with central administration team, and also met with Ted Priest, the executive director from the Red River Basin Commission, just overview of their program. They also, he was here, I believe, in June before the board, and we agreed to sponsor a potential grant opportunity for them for the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which they, we found out they were awarded that, and so he may be back here again to talk a little bit on that with the board. On Friday morning, I spent the morning with Scott Fennig and Rhonda and Troy and Pat, which we, we had our board agenda here this morning. And I also met with Tom Fuchs from Construction Engineers on the Jubinal Center project. Lastly, I just wanted to bring a request before the board. The county policy allows employees to carry 240 hours of vacation each year forward into the new year. I currently have more than that, and I did have two vacations scheduled right as I started this position, which I felt was not in the best interest to go on. And so, had I taken those vacations, I would be within that 240-hour range. My request before you today is I intend to work those hours down as much as I can here through the end of the year, but would look for permission from this board in all transparency just to carry forward any hours that I'm not allowed to, to, or not able to take this through the rest of this year.
I'll make a motion to approve Steve's request.
Motion by Commissioner Wayland to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Haney. Discussion?
I, I think it would be noted that, you know, the reason for this is because of his position change and the responsibilities that is forcing us to, not forcing, but making him not able to take some of that. So, I, I think normally we would address this at the time of hire, so I agree with what we're doing here.
And I will say, as chair, I've worked with Steve on this and advised to draw down as much as possible by the end of the year, within reason. I do appreciate the fact that you didn't come on board and say, thanks for the job, I'm taking my vacation. I, you know, we definitely needed your leadership during that time, so I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. All right, all those, we are adjourned.